Heavenly Father, thank you so much just for this morning and everybody that's here. We just pray that we would open our ears and our eyes to what you have to speak to us about this morning. God, we pray for those that are not here, that they would come next week safely and bring them right.
Amen. All right. So last week, we looked at Mark 13 and through the lens of 9/11, which to some of you was interesting and some of you was not, and that's okay. This week, we're completing our Thinking Theologically using film. I'm only going to use the trailer, but I'm going to read you the synopsis of the movie. What I hope is that as you go forward from this class, and not because of this class, but because of what you have learned on your own, that you're able to look at things and say, "Oh, I can see this Bible story. I can see how this relates to my life." Too many times, we look at the Bible as an old dusty book that's 2,000 years old, and we're, you know, "Oh, this doesn't apply to me," and then we just skip ahead. "Oh, that doesn't apply to me either." "Oh, no, that doesn't..." And we forget that those people were real people, just like we're real people. And while the details may be different in our lives to their lives, there is something that we can get from it. A lot of scholars do a lot of work to give us the context of how people lived their lives at that time, and we're still to this day learning. In fact, we've done more scholarly research in understanding how people lived in the last 20 years. Well, I'd say since the 60s, so it's been a little more than 20 years. But since the 60s, we've learned more about how people lived during that time than we knew ever before. And that's a lot of time that we've lost in understanding how people lived. So today, we're going to look at The Widow's Mic, which is, the Scripture is Mark 12:41 to 44. And I will say this, "The Gospel of Mark is marked by an incremental, haphazard, and incomplete goodness." Now, when I first heard that phrase, I thought, "Boy, that's not, that doesn't make sense. You know, this is the gospel. Gospel means good news." But the quote is in Mark, "It's incremental, and it's haphazard, and in places it's incomplete." We can look at the original ending of Mark where the women went to the tomb and they said, they were told, "Well, he's not here. Now go tell everybody," and they did. That's pretty incomplete. We know that there is something left that we didn't see in that text because we're in on it today. So who wants to read Mark 12:41 to 44?
Sure.
I will. Jesus sat near the temple money box and watched the people put in the money. Many rich people gave large sums of money. Then a poor widow came and put in two small copper coins, which were only worth a few cents. Calling his followers to him, Jesus said, "I tell you the truth. This poor widow gave more than all those rich people. They gave only what they didn't need. This woman is very poor, and she gave all she had. She gave all she had to live on."
So this Scripture tells about Jesus sitting and they're observing these people giving to the temple. And they didn't do it, you know, like we do, pass the plague, throw your envelope in, nobody knows what's on the envelope. Write a check, fold it in half, nobody knows what's on the check. They made a show of it. If they had the cash, $100 bill, and bring it in pennies in a wheelbarrow, because then it looked like a lot of money, they did it. It was a big deal to be seen on the way to the temple carrying your riches. It was a big deal, the way in which you deposited your money. Think about Michael Jordan depositing the basketball. There's a lot better ways to do it, but that sure did get people's attention. And so Jesus is watching this show, and that's what it was. It was a show. And He sees all these people giving in these elaborate ways. And then a woman who's a widow comes, and they call it aleptha, which is basically, it's less than a penny. I think she gives two aleptha. And she gives it to the treasurer. Now, how many of you, I mean, all of you probably know this, but let's refresh our memories. Widows in ancient society. Who can tell me anything about it?
They were in a precarious position.
Probably lowest of the low. They didn't have anybody to take care of.
Their relatives didn't take care of them.
And they had no power to take care of themselves.
What about women in the first century?
Same thing.
Couldn't own property.
Yeah.
Couldn't work, couldn't make a living. And then add on top of that, being a widow, no husband, so no income at all. No property, living off the kindness of others.
No validity.
No validity, on the outskirts of society. In the Scriptures, we always hear, "Take care of the widows, the orphans, and the aliens." And this being, the widows were among the people who were forgotten, who, it's not that they didn't have a voice, but their voice was literally silenced because they didn't have anyone to speak for them.
Wasn't it, didn't they, like, if your husband died and made you a widow, didn't you, did the next son come in?
If you had sons.
Brother.
No, but I mean, the son or the brother.
Yeah, the brother.
Brother would have taken them as a wife and...
Well...
Where I was going with this is she would, if they said widow, that she had nothing, there probably was no lineage on them that she had to go to.
Correct. So by this time, the, there were still some instances of polygamy, but it had mostly gone away by now. And so there was no taking your brother's wife. You might take her into your household, but you wouldn't take her as a wife. But that was an option. It was not, you didn't have to do it. So it could be that, you know, we even see in Ruth where, you know, the Boaz asks the gentleman that's related and says, "Do you want this land?" And the guy says, "Oh, yeah, I want that land." He goes, "You gotta have the woman that goes with the land." He goes, "Oh, no. I don't think that's such a good deal." Of course, Boaz wanted the woman and not the person who cared about the land, but there's that option. "Nah, I'm not going to add another mouth to feed." You know, you gotta remember, there was like one rich person in the entire area of Judea, and it was King Herod at this time. It was not, I mean, nobody was well off. Blacksmiths and carpenters worked together to make enough to just feed their family. Stonemasons, you know, breathed stonewall dust all day just to be able to feed their family, and they might go once at a time during a period of season without anything. And so they really, even those people depended on the kindness of their community in a way that we don't really understand today. So what does Jesus say about the widow?
She gave everything she had.
Does He fix it?
Nope.
Does He call out the scribes and the Pharisees for taking the money?
Nope. He's just calling witnesses to what He sees.
He just witnesses it to the disciples, right? Well, let's go back to the earlier statement. "The Gospel of Mark is marked by incremental, haphazard, and incomplete goodness." What is one of the things that this Scripture tells us, though?
Jesus was aware.
Jesus was aware. That means God's aware.
Yes.
God's aware of her heart. God's aware of her suffering. God's aware of her giving more than what she could even afford. That also means on the other side, God's aware of the other people making the show, and they could do much, you know, much better. I've seen this used in, not capital campaigns, but stewardship campaigns. And you have to be kind of careful about it because when you ask someone to tithe, there are some people that if they tithe 10%, that takes money off their children's table, off their kitchen table. And some people, 10% is a joke. They could afford 20% if they wanted to. And then there's, you know, the people that can, and that's understandable. And I try to get away from the strict 10% because that goes right back to the Pharisees tithing a 10% of their herbs and things like that. You know, I want people to give joyously because I believe it comes from our heart more than our pocketbook. Not saying that don't give to the church, but I'm saying that I want it to be joyful. I want people to give from their heart because God sees that, and it's evident in this Scripture that God sees when we give the stake that we give it in. So I'm going to play for you a trailer from a movie called Frozen River. Has anybody seen it? It's another one of those independent films, and I'm just going to play it and I'll tell you what the plot is. So can you get the light up? It's a minute and 48 seconds.
Who's daddy?
Probably the Atlantic City boy now. He's gambling away the money for our house.
Are we even able to look for him?
What are you doing with my car?
Had the keys in it. The guy driving a gun on the bus. I got a friend who might buy that.
It's not for sale.
He's a smuggler. He'll pay more than his work.
I'm not driving just anybody across the border who needs a ride.
There's no border here. This is free travel between nations.
There's a border patrol.
I'm not going to stop you here. What?
This is about the woman that was with you. She's known to have brought illegal aliens into the country. You can't come up with the cash. You've lost your $1,500 deposit.
I can get a job, you know. You're going to school. I just need one more run to get the double. Let him out of this.
There's only $600 here.
You want the make-up change now?
I want the rest.
You're going to get us all killed.
I want any trouble from him, Lila. We have a situation with a couple of smugglers.
Did he do something?
I'm just directing you to step out of the vehicle.
Troopers want somebody.
My kid's got no one but me.
What you got to do?
I didn't know any other way to keep us together.
That doesn't really tell you much about the film, but I'm going to read you the brief synopsis. So the film is set in upstate New York near the Canadian border in Mohawk country. I don't know if you caught it, but the main character, her husband, at the opening of the film, she wakes up, he's gone. And so is their savings. They're saving up for a double-wide trailer, not a mansion. And so she goes to the bingo parlor where he usually gambles, only to have her car taken. It's where she meets Lila. Now, Lila's been in trouble before with the law. They have kind of a precarious relationship. Lila gets the main character into smuggling people across the frozen river so that she can make a little bit of money. Because as a convenience store clerk, that's what she normally does, she does not make enough money to put food on the table, let alone to save up for this double-wide. They'd already put $1,500 down, and their next payment's due pretty quick. If they don't pay it, they lose what they've already put into it. The trailer that they're in now is a single-wide that's literally falling apart. In fact, the pipes freeze at one time, and the older boy goes outside to warm them up. And he's got a blowtorch on the pipes, and he's doing that, and ends up catching the corner of the trailer on fire. Puts it out, and then promptly goes inside, burns a whole lot of popcorn so that when mom comes home, she doesn't notice. As they make these trips across the border, they form an unlikely friendship. And she says, "I'm going to do one more, and then I'm out." They go to do that one last run. The guy tries to cheat them. She shoots at him, he shoots at her, he grazes her. They go back across the river, the car's about to go through the river. They let the two people that were in the trunk out, and they all flee. Later, she's picked up by police. And they say, "We know you didn't do it. We want to know where this other woman is." Now, earlier in the trailer, you heard, "They're not going to do anything to you because your wife." They didn't even suspect her, even though they knew she was driving the car. It was her car at the bottom of the river that they found. But they wanted this other person. Anyway, because the police are demanding a scapegoat, the tribal head decides to excommunicate Lila for five years because of her history of smuggling, which involved the death of her Mohawk husband years earlier. Surprised and saddened by the news, Lila gives in to raise Ray's plea to go free for the sake of her children. However, running through the woods, Ray, who's our main character, she has a fit of conscience, and she returns. She gives her share of the money to Lila with instructions for taking care of her sons and seeing through the purchase for the plans of the trailer home. She and the illegal immigrants are surrendered to the police, and a trooper speculates she'll serve a whole four months in jail. She calls her son TJ, the elder boy, to explain what's happened. Lila pushes her way into her mother-in-law's home, reclaims her infant son, and she and the baby show up at the Eddie trailer, this Ray Eddie, while TJ is still on the phone with his jailed mother. And in the next scene, TJ completes the welding of a bicycle-propelled carousel bearing his younger brother and Lila's strapped-in baby. He pedals the carousel while Lila smiles on, and a truck nears carrying their new single-wide trailer home. So they never get the double-wide. And it goes back to this incremental, haphazard, and incomplete goodness. There are happy endings, it's just sometimes they're not really happy. Sometimes they're just kind of okay. And Mark is full of these incomplete, haphazard, and incremental pieces of goodness. So let me ask you this, when you saw the trailer or heard the description, what struck you as being similar or dissimilar to The Widow's Mic? And it's okay if you didn't get anything out of it.
Well, I took out of it, you know, she didn't know what to do. Lost. You know, she's got these kids to support, and now she's going to lose what she had. She had to do what she had to do.
Well, her goal was to keep the children together. Husband never comes back. I just spoiled that movie for you right now. He never comes back. He does gamble away the money. You never hear from him again.
For her, it's probably a good thing.
Yeah.
I guess I'm having a little problem trying to compare the two. Of course, I see the widow giving every joy she has. Unless Ray basically gave up her children to Lila to, you know...
In my opinion, and I'm not saying everything that she did was for her children, for their home, you know, to have that dream home. And I think that in that she did things that she would not have normally done, and she gave of herself in ways that she would not have normally done. And again, in my opinion, while it's not a religious film, I can see where God saw. Did God fix it? I mean, kind of like in the story, it's observed.
Okay, I see that.
When I was young, I was in a private school, and my mom, my dad left when I was a kid, and so they divorced. And while I was in private school, she met this guy, and they started dating. Well, at this private Christian school, that, oh, your mom can't date, she's been divorced. I ended up with detention. So much for the sins of the parent not transferring to the children. So you might have heard of this person that ran this school, is Robert Tilton. He's the guy who puts your hands on the screen, sends your money to my P.O. box. He is still around. He is in Florida now. He's on his third or fourth wife. But my punishment was to open the mail. And I'd put checks in one basket and put letters and envelopes in another basket. And every once in a while, I'd read the letters. And these people just wanted his prayers, more than anything else, just wanted his prayers. And yeah, there were some people that given some, a lot of money. But there were some people that just wanted his prayers, and were given, you could tell, more than they could afford. And one day, the secretary comes in, like she always did, she got both baskets, and on the way into Pastor Tilton's office, she opens the door, and I hear one of them hit the trash can on the way through. I'm pretty sure it wasn't the checks. And it really turned me off to church and to religion for a long time. But God, in my opinion, God saw. God saw the heart of these people that were giving, even if their giving was misplaced. And that was, it took me a long time to get to that place, to know that even though there is injustice, God still sees it. Does God fix it? No, not always, sometimes. But God does see it. And that's why with this Widow's Mic, I wanted to use this in our transition from Thinking Theologically, when you watch films, to Thinking Theologically, period. Because next week, I want you to pick a story in Mark or in the Bible that speaks to you in a way that you can relate to in your life. Whether it's, "Oh, my dad or my mom exemplified this story by this," and we'll just sit down and have a good discussion. So I'm going to tell you a little bit of how I see The Widow's Mic in my life, and kind of give you a clue as to how this works. So I told you my mom and dad divorced when I was born. My mom was told by her mother, "You cannot raise him because you don't have the means to raise him. I want to take care of him." And Grandma had some money saved up, and so Grandma and Grandpa got me. And they did the best they could. What my mom was not totally aware of is that my grandmother was emotionally and mentally abusive. And so I endured through that for 17 years until she passed away. A little bit of that time, Mom and I lived in Dallas for a while. But Grandma would tell me stuff about Mom to spoil me against Mom. So when we did live in Dallas together, it was not a happy mom-and-son time. And it wasn't until when Grandma passed, we were at a Chinese restaurant, we had a good discussion, and we're on the way out to the car, and it was raining, and we're running out, and we're kind of giggling because it's, you know, it's funny. I don't know why it was funny. And we're standing there in the rain, across the car from each other, and Mom's unlocking the car, and I said, "You know, you're not, you're not that bad after all." And she said, "It really opened her eyes to see how much trauma I'd been through." Of course, I didn't realize any different because I was the one experiencing it. Fast forward a few years, I decided to join the army. Oh, that was a, that was a hard one for a mom sending her only son off. And through that, I had got a pretty good case of PTSD, and so there's two cases of her trusting someone with her son, that she is, that she is feeling now her son being hurt because of her trust. And so when I went to join ministry, this was while Mom was really sick, and I said, "Mom, I want to be a pastor." And she had been in religion, she had even been a lay speaker for the assemblies. She turns to me and she says, "Oh, please don't. Please don't do it. It's the most lonely thing you can do, and it's not going to, just please don't." Well, I didn't listen to her, as you can tell. And it's been somewhat lonely, and there's been times that it's been painful, but all in all, I'm, I'm good with it. But to me, my mom in The Widow's Mic exemplifies giving all she has. She gave up her son so that he could have a better life. She trusted an institution so that they would take care of him. And then she said, "Look, I'd really rather you not do this one thing," and her son did his own thing. So that being said, that kind of a little bit of the thought that I want you to put behind for next week, pick a story from Mark or a story from the Bible that you can kind of relate to in a way like that. Because what I would hope at the conclusion of the six weeks is not that you learned anything about Mark. Yes, I would like you to know a little bit about Mark. But being able to see Theologically in your life and relate that to this ancient book that a lot of people still think there is no relevance in, I think that's the greater treasure here. I mean, understanding when Mark was written, understanding who wrote Mark, that's great and all, but can you apply it to your life? And I think that's kind of where the treasure really lies, is can you look at a story and go, "Hey, that reminds me of my aunt." To me, that's the greater treasure in this. And yes, there will be a test at the end. So just a quick question. Knowing the story of The Widow's Mic, seeing what you've seen, hearing what you've heard, is there anyone in your lives that represents the widow in The Widow's Mic to you today?
Yeah. I remember a Christmas when Jim and I were fairly small, and we wanted a 22 rifle really bad. Mom and Dad bought us one, one. They had $3 left for Christmas after they bought that.
That's, that's definitely, definitely right along the lines there.
Didn't know that for a long, long time.
How'd you feel when you found it out?
Profoundly grateful to have parents that cared that much.
Anyone else?
I know, everybody, I'm Shannon Williams, by the way, visiting today, but we're actually, I'm actually a member of the First United Methodist in Wyoming, so, but I live here My husband, my 17-year-old son, who's not here today, was from my first marriage. And when I was fighting for custody for my son, my husband, who him and I have been married since my son was a month from turning three, cashed out his 401K and spent every last penny he had on three custody battles to make sure that I gained custody of my son. He had nothing left, but he gave me everything he had.
Well, I had an incident, and it happened through this church, and I've said it before, and it's not as mind-blowing as that. But I know, I raised two children by myself and was going to this church, and it was a time when they were talking about tithing and giving your 10%. And the minister that was here, having been Billy Joe Dunham. And I didn't have 10% to give, like you were talking. It didn't really think I had to raise these two children, pay rent and stuff. But I didn't want the church to think that I wasn't coming because of anything that happened at the church. So I went in and talked to Billy Joe and told Billy Joe, "I really liked the church, but I, I was going to quit coming because of the money situation." And Billy Joe said, "You tell me where in this Bible it says you have to give money. It says 10% of what you have. And if you have more time, then you give 10% of your time." So I started teaching a Sunday School class and continued coming because of his statement.
Anyone else?
My mother was a widow, and she had to raise eight children, five of them. And we lived on a poor farm.
What?
It wasn't a poor farm, as it said.
Everybody's had a poor farm there.
Yeah. But she read an article in a paper where this lady needed a stove so desperately. And I got to tell you, we lived on wind and water. She read that letter in the newspaper that this lady was desperate for a stove. I don't know even where she got the dollar, but that was all she could have, and so she sent it to that lady so she could get a stove. Now, whether the lady got the stove or not, I don't know, but my mother felt like she had done her part.
My mother, one time, when...
My mother one time, back, back then avocados were not, not plentiful like they are now. And there was a family in our church that had a child that never truly grew. I don't know how old she was at the time, but she still fit in a crib. And so one of them would come to church in the morning and one in the evening to take care of that. And one time, my mother bought some avocados and we were on schoolteacher's salary. My mother didn't work, so we, we didn't have too much either. And I hadn't even known what they were, but this little girl liked those. And the mother took my sister and I over there to give her those avocados that time. And I, and I didn't think about the lesson it taught me at the time, but now when I remember, it was...
So we can kinda see how just this one story and just these four verses can impact how we see not only the Bible, but how we see our own lives or the lives of those who are here. Now imagine with four verses having this kind of response, this kind of aha. There's a whole lot more verses in this Bible. There are stories upon stories upon stories of wonderful things, of not-so-wonderful things, of trials, tribulations, successes and failures. And so for next week, if you find one of those stories, I encourage you to, you know, I'm not gonna put anyone on the spot. We're just gonna sit down and we're just gonna chat. Have the verse that you wanna relate and then the story. You know, you don't have to go into great detail. You know, a couple of minutes is fine. But I encourage you because this is the real work that, I mean, that even I do, is relating stories back to this, this ancient text. And I think you'll find that it's, reading scripture is great and we should all do it. But being able to understand the scripture in a way that's personal to us is very rewarding because it makes the scripture real for us. You know, saying, oh, this happened to Job and there's no way I can ever understand that, so I'm just gonna take it at face value. Understanding at a personal level what happened and saying, oh, I can relate to this because... You might not ever memorize the chapter and verse. I know I never did. But it'll help you understand the story on a personal level. And when you understand the stories that are in the Bible on a personal level, they become real. I mean, they become tangible in our lives. And we're able to pass those on in a way that reading chapter and verse will never do. Because I can sit here and recite chapter and verse I have to read and I could bore you all to tears. Or we can share stories and we could all really get something out of it. And I think that that's the thing that we miss sometimes when we read the Bible just out of obligation or out of, you know, oh, I'm, I'm bound and determined, it's February the fourth and I'm in Leviticus, I'm not gonna give up on my yearly Bible plan. Because that's usually when people give up, is February when they read Leviticus. But there are stories in there. And even though there's a lot of, if you got a King James Version of the Bible, there's a lot of hard English, but the story's in there. The stories are very relatable. And while a lot has changed between then and now, and I still say it's an alien culture and when we look in, we really don't understand, there are glimpses that we can understand in these stories. Any questions about any of the lessons so far?
It's been good. It has been good. Thought provoking.
Well, I wish y'all could have seen a little more of that Frozen River movie, unfortunately, because of copyright, they don't let you have much. In fact, the last week's lesson, when I went to upload it, was immediately flagged for copyright violation. And so I had to write a long thing establishing why I was using it and that I was not taking credit for it. They released it that day, which normally they hold it for thirty days and then ask for an extension. So sometimes it can take three months before they actually release the clip. But they released it that day, which I, I was thankful for.
Well, I just glad you went and told about it because I just knew that those women were gonna sink in the car in the cold river, so.
Well, there was a few times that we thought so too in watching the movie. But it was interesting because in all the stories that you've told and this story and then The Widow's Might, there's never a, it's never fully wrapped up with a neat little bow. There's still more story that goes on. There's still, I mean, we don't ever learn what happens to the widow. We don't ever learn anything more than what we're told. And so if we really think about it, and I encourage you to, sometimes there's characters in the Bible that we, we finish their story, but we never really wonder, well, what came of them? And sometimes that's the imaginative work of, of being in relationship with the text is going, well, I wonder if this happened. I wonder how God would have worked in their life after this incident. And you know, it's quite all right to do. There's a, if you've ever heard of Midrash, which is kinda like Jewish folklore, it tries to explain what happens in a story. So if they read a story, like say for instance, the first creation story and the second creation story, and they go, why are there two? And so they create a story to explain why there's two. Now, is it true? They don't even say it's true. They just say, hey, it helps to explain it. But it's part of the imaginative work of living in this text, of saying, well, how can this apply? And it's, I mean, if they can do it, we can do it.
I could share devotion that I gave at Circle.
Please do.
This week on this very verse. Says, "The Bible tells about a day when Jesus was in the outer courtyard of the temple in Jerusalem, watching as people dropped their financial offerings into one of the large inverted trumpet-shaped containers located there. He saw the rich throw in large sums, usually in ways that led others to take note of the clatter caused by their many coins. He also saw a woman, a poor widow, contribute two small copper coins, an amount that would not even be equal to a penny in American money today. Jesus commented, 'This poor widow has put in more than all those giving to the temple treasury, for they all gave out of their surplus, but she gave out of her poverty. She has put everything she possessed, all she had to live on. This woman gave everything. The rich contributors apparently gave only a small percentage of the excess they had. Rarely did people give more than the ten percent tithe required by the law of Moses. This woman gave one hundred percent. Some say it was foolish for her to give everything. Well, how could she support herself, they ask? The reality is, two small copper coins wouldn't have been enough for her to purchase anything other than a small round of pita bread. It certainly wasn't enough money for a day's worth of food, any form of lodging, or any other goods or services she might have needed. In giving everything to the Lord, she was surrendering her entire being. She made herself totally dependent upon God. She trusted Him to care for her in the same way He provided for the sparrows and the field flowers, solely because she was His beloved creation. What percentage of your life are you entrusting to God today? Is it everything or just a part?"
Thank you. All right. With that, let's pray. Lord, we thank you for the scriptures and we thank you for the stories that are in them that we can learn from. Lord, we ask as we go forward from here today that you help us to see how these scriptures interact with our daily life and how we interact with them. Lord, as we go forward from this place, help us not just see those things, but help us to live these scriptures on a daily basis. In your holy name we pray. Amen.